Hey, welcome everybody to the Get Growing Live Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley and we are joined today by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey everyone, we're glad you're here.
Yes, very excited to see you here today. Go ahead and pop in, let us know where you're coming in from, and do start adding in your questions. This is an open session, so I'm not going to be doing the same degree of training as I would be because we're kind of doing this every other week thing, right, where we go in-depth and we take a breather and we ask and answer tons of questions to help you really get a feel for the things that you're learning and more importantly, the things that you're implementing in your business, because we can sit here every week for an hour and learn lots of things, but what does it matter if you're not going out and taking action on them? So, we are here for you to help you start getting those pieces into place and more importantly, getting those feet moving toward the results that you want. For those of you who are brand new, a little bit of housekeeping, this weekly work session is open to anyone who is a member or distributor of Young Living. We are obviously geared toward tools to build a business, so we're here to help you with that. If you are not a member of ours with Get Oiling, if you're not a part of this community yet, we invite you to join us. You can obviously attend this for free, it costs you nothing. We will help you if you ask us questions. And we would certainly love for you to come and join us in our community. You can get started with us for $1 today at getoiling.com. And we also have a super special, special bonus. For those of you who get started with us on annual commitment, which by the way, come with a 30-day money-back guarantee, we will talk more about that specifically at the end of our call today. So, it looks like we've already got... I see this little thing blinking down here. Alright. Interesting. Oh hey, Jackie, I think that they're depending on your provider and it, or maybe it's even our internet here, there could be a lag of like 30 to 90 seconds depending, where you might get the first frame of the webinar as it's starting, or you might, you know, you might have just a tiny bit of a delay, just FYI. But we're here and we can see you when you, when you send us a chat or send a question. So, today we had a couple of, I don't know, Greg, would you say that we have like a theme of the questions we received this week? This seems a little, little broad across the board.
They were kind of all over, I think, a little bit, I'm just looking at the list.
Cool. And let's see, anyone who submitted a question to us prior to our call today, if you're here, let me see. Let's see, was it? Hi Brenda, you're here. You submitted a question ahead of time. You got the one thing worked out, right, about the texting. But Brenda had had a question about, and this is specific to those of us with a Get Oiling membership, you know that we have marketing credits. That is sort of a metric in your account that comes with, there's a certain amount for each plan, you could always get more, and they are used for things like email and text marketing, and certain kinds of text marketing use more than others. So maybe we can do a quick rundown, Greg, of how the marketing credits work in just a simple sense. And if someone is, say, maybe, maybe they have a very large list of people to communicate with or a large team to communicate with, and they've done maybe a lot of text marketing, or they think they're going to run out of credits, maybe what they could do in that instance as well, to see how many they have and how they can get more.
Yeah, absolutely here. So what I can show you, I will actually just pull up a demo account here, let me share up my screen. Alright, we should be seeing Jane, our lovely tester account here. Okay, so, marketing credits, some of the, Brenda, I believe you had asked where you can find it, how many are left? So I'll show you that first here quick and then explain a little bit more about how they work. So you can find out how many are left on your account, under my account settings down here. And then by clicking on my plan, there will be a section here showing how many credits you have, how many you've used in the month, it's a monthly thing, and then how many credits are available right now. So, this is the demo account, so I'm not sure if these numbers are accurate or not, we probably haven't sent any emails in there, I don't know why, it's 25,001, but either way, so the way marketing credits work is when you're sending messages. So what I'll do here, I'll go into our contact manager and I will just say I'm gonna mail. So, it takes, basically every different types of communication has a different credit cost. And what this does, I mean, this allows you to, especially with texting, send to different people in different countries, which may have different costs for delivering those messages. So, anyway, so it takes one credit to mail, to send one mail to one contact. So if you, if you have a bigger list and it's like, say, 2,000, 3,000 people on there, that uses like 2,000 or 3,000 credits, however many people that you have on your list for an email. So email is really probably the most, you know, affordable, so to speak, in terms of the marketing credits. Excuse me, texting uses a little bit more. It uses actually 15 credits per message. Now, it's a little more complicated than that, and there actually is a neat little, under actions and text, there's a needle counter here that tells you how many credits it's going to use. So there's only one recipient here, you can send up to 1,600 characters in a text. But as you type here, it'll tell you, so like, once you reach a certain length, okay, so now it says, "Send in two messages," and then it's like 30 credits, but anyway, so every, it'll tell you that on the, you know, so texting is a little more confusing since there's more to it, but it does tell you the total there, and then that's how many come out of your credits whenever you send them. Now if you run out, they're pretty reasonable, I believe we have them priced for, it's like a dollar for 1,000 of them, which is also under my plan, the same place I was just at a few minutes ago. And that'll let you add some on to your plan. And if it says "Email us" for whatever reason, you just send us an email. But basically, just a kind of a way to establish, you know, so somebody, there isn't some accident where you're accidentally texting 10,000 people or whatever, just kind of a check on that too. So, that's kind of the, that's how they work, and yeah, I mean, very few people, most people are within the capacity of their plan. Every once in a while, you know, occasionally, Young Living will have a flash sale and somebody wants to text something out, and so you might need to get a couple dollars more credits or whatever to do that, but that's all, all built right into the plan. So, hopefully that gets you going.
Very cool. And, and there is the distinction as well, you mentioned the distinction between the, the message, the multimedia message versus just the text, right, like the cost of, the cost of credits for a text with a picture, or, you know, versus just sending out literal, just text to someone.
Yeah, actually, I don't know that I covered that here. So, so as you saw, let me type in here, you know, obviously this isn't like send to somebody, but once you reach, I think it's 160 characters, it splits it up into multiple texts, that's just how the whole texting infrastructure works. But if you choose a picture, this is interesting, so.
It's not actually showing what you're doing right now, Greg, on your screen?
Ah, okay, there, thank you. I think I paused it in case something happened. So anyway. Okay, so let me go to three messages here, I'll show you, it'll bump to 45 credits here in a little bit. So, now there's a little alert that pops up, this is "Consider sending a picture with your message," because that only, that uses 40 credits per recipient, regardless of how many you have on here. So like, if I want to send this picture, for example, it uses 40 credits per, per, per message. So it's actually, if you're going to be sending a longer text message, you can send up to, I think, 1,600 characters with a picture message for only 40 credits, but if you don't send a picture, it's actually more expensive. It's, it's really complicated, I didn't invent these rules, but it's, the little calculator tells you what it is here. So yeah, basically, if you're sending, the simple thing is if you're, if you're sending a text under 160 characters, it's 15 credits to the US and Canada, and then 40 for a picture message. If you want to send a longer message, if it's more than, I don't know, whatever that is, 160 times 3, then you probably want to send a picture message, and it'll alert you to that when you're sending it in here as well. So you know that you can make the most out of your credits.
Awesome. So, so it's 15 for text, 40 for image, and you're gonna have this little, this little thing pop up there on the bottom that's gonna let you know what it's gonna cost you in terms of credits, so that's awesome.
Yep.
Great, thank you for that. Oh, and by the way, for those of you who are curious, we do get the question all the time, how we compare to other text marketing services out there? And when you break it down per cost of each text, we are more competitive, the better, you know, the better rate cost for text. And it's inside of your own system, it's got everything else that you need to grow your business, you don't need five different tools, we've got you covered with everything right here. All you need is a virtual office. Alright, so we had a couple of other questions. Um, let's see, which ones do you want to do first? There was one about exporting contacts, and then there's another one about, was that about the images showing up?
Yeah, probably, okay, so.
Okay, okay.
We can do the export, that's the next question we got here. So somebody asked, so how they can export their contacts, and there's just a number of reasons, you know, any number of reasons you might want to do that, like maybe you have, you want to put them into Microsoft Word and do a mail merge and print out some labels, or whatever the case might be. So, to export, there's two main ways of doing this. One is you can get all your contacts under contact settings. Clicking over here, and you're seeing my screen now, right? Yeah, okay. And then if you scroll down to the bottom, there's an export, and then it'll give you a file, you just click a button and you get a big file with all your contacts in it, and you can do with it whatever you want to. Now, the question that came in was, "I know I can export all the contacts, but how do I export just selected ones?" Now, this demo account only has one contact in there, but this principle applies. So you can, let's say you've got a much bigger set of contacts, and you can filter down, let's say you want to filter whatever, however you want to, or you can select, either one applies. But then, once you've done that, go under actions, and then there's this ad campaign follow-up planner tags link. In the very bottom, you'll see this little export link over here. If you click on that, then it will take you to the screen that will just export the people that you have either selected or filtered. So, that's a great way to get a subset of your people out of there, if you've got somebody, you know, especially if you've got tags and you want to export everyone that's going to like, maybe an event or something like that, and maybe make some special labels and material for them.
Actually, I think one practical application of what you just showed, we got a question a couple weeks ago or last week, I forget, about how you can actually go through and filter a list. You know, with, when you have the contact manager, you're only going to see, what is it, like, you know, 10, 20 or so contacts per page, right? And if you don't already have tags on them, when you import them, say you've already got a large list that you're importing, what you could do is export your existing Get Oiling list, and then on an Excel spreadsheet, where you can very easily see who's what, you know, make deletions and all kinds of stuff, you can then re-upload that spreadsheet with a new tag. So for instance, if you want to update who's building the business and who's not, right? Because that's not a designation that's going to necessarily show up, you know, if somebody is, you know, they're in as a distributor technically, but they haven't decided to build, and you want to make sure that you're keeping up to date on who's who with who you're contacting for, for that type of message, this would be a way for you to keep that going as well. So export your list, edit it to your heart's content, and upload it with a tag, so just that those people who remain on that list have that new tag in your system.
Right, yeah, and when you're importing, there actually is a field for tag. So if you add a column to your spreadsheet, yeah, under contact settings, import, and then you choose a file. Let's see if I can grab one, and do this, I'll show you on the next screen, there's going to be a, where's, oh I guess, any of these. So like, there's just a field called "Tags." So when you're, when you're adding that column in your spreadsheet, you can choose either did you separate them with commas or semicolons, or if it's only one tag. So you can, you can basically import the tags then too, so that's how you would.
Oh, so tag them in the spreadsheet?
Yeah, you can tag them right in the spreadsheet, so you can export them all, and then, you know, it's, it might just be easier to go down row by row and type them in, type in the tags than it is to edit them, and then just re-upload them and make sure you choose tags. This one won't, I don't, I don't think auto detect, because like, a lot of times it'll try to detect what's in here based on the column name, but I don't think it does tags, so you have to specifically choose tags when you import.
Very cool, very cool. Alright, and then, was the other one? Okay, so the one from Michelle was about, oh, oh yeah, how to, how to put a PDF file into your system so that you can send it out, so that you can link to it, and so on. So like, if you wanted to have, you know, a PDF as a, as a lead magnet, for instance, or if you wanted to attach it to emails that you send out in your campaigns, or something to that effect. How would we go about taking a PDF that we have, which by the way, you guys, if you use Grow Workspace for your content, you can export a Sway file, which is what they, they tend to share in, right? You can export a Sway file to a PDF, put that on the other side of a landing page, and you have a funnel. Right? So how would we go about attaching that PDF into our system?
So cool, okay, so depending on whether you're doing a campaign or just a one-time email, I'll show with a one-time email, let's say it's a monthly promo that you want to send out. And let's say I filtered my contacts down to the people that I want to send this to. Click Mail, and there is a Upload File button here. So you can click that, and then either drop your file on there, or click it, it'll pop up a box. It literally lets you upload any file that you want to, I don't know exactly what all these files are, so I want, I wonder if there's something, yeah. This demo account doesn't have one.
I might be able to grab something for you and send over, like an actual, what I was, what I was just talking about.
Oh, that'd be awesome, yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, with PDFs, there's a couple different ways you can try, I mean, we're showing you how to attach the PDF here. In the case of, let's say you want to transfer the content over there, sometimes it works to like copy and paste that over here as well, you can, you know, this box is a so-called rich text editor where you can change the fonts and colors and all that. But sometimes a copy and paste doesn't work very well, so you can experiment with your specific PDF that may or may not work, but we'll demo here how to upload a PDF that is an actual PDF file that, you know, people can download. PDF is really, yeah, Jackie asked, can we upload a PDF into a campaign? Yes, this is the case. So.
Alright, and actually Jackie, I am, I, Greg, I just sent you in Slack a PDF of a Sway that Jackie actually sent me the other day. So, just so you guys know, when you have a Sway file up in the top right corner of the screen, there's a little gear button, and you click that, or wait, I'm sorry, not the gear, the little dot, 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 you hit Export, and then you can choose to export it to a PDF, and then it'll download it right to your computer.
Alright, so that went pretty quick, actually, I don't know if that even showed up there, but basically I hit Upload, and I had my file that you sent me in another window, and I just dragged it on top of there, and then now I've got a link. So, it's pretty cool. Now, now this, the file that's uploaded actually stays in your like file manager, so now there's this Network Marketing 101 that you could put anywhere else. And to Jackie's question, if we went under Contact Campaigns, yes, you can insert those over there as well. So, let me just show you that here quick.
So that quick step, you guys, for a PDF, just open up a message like you're going to send it to someone. Drop that PDF file on that insert, was Insert Files?
Yep, or Upload File.
Upload File, you click Decide What You Want to Add, so you, you upload that, and now there's a link in there, and it's also in your Files Manager, so you can use it anywhere else in your system.
Right, so you can see here, when creating a campaign message, there's also this upload file, and if I click over here, there's that PDF that I just uploaded. So it exists everywhere that this, you see this little editor down here, so I can go ahead and drop that on here. And then when your recipients see this in their email, if they click on it, it will download it. Now, if you want to do something different, like put it in, or want to put it somewhere else, you can also, you know, click Edit Link, and then that gives you a big long link, which you could then like copy and paste and put into a text message too, so if you wanted a text out of PDF.
Another thing you could do is on the other side of a landing page, the redirect, like where, where your person goes after they sign up, they can land on the PDF as well.
Right, so if I were to create a new landing page, well, let me pick one that has some content in it, to start out with. Under Settings, Page Settings, that's this Show Message After Registration box, you can go ahead and, quick, you know, I want to add that here as well, so you could have, you know, "Congrats, you're in." And then, Quick to Download.
And then. Another thing you could do is to, if you hover over that Network Marketing 101 link right there, and you can, so go to, yeah, you can go to Open Link or Edit Link to actually grab that URL. And when you, we scroll down just a little bit more there, after registration, Send a Visitor To, and you could actually just have them land on that page.
It'll open right up to the PDF. That's a cool idea.
Alright, ooh, that's, um, maybe we can do a quick walkthrough on that, that'd be a fun training, because I know a lot of, yeah, that was fast for you, you know what, we've got time, we'll walk back through it here in just a bit. Val, that's actually, that's a worthy sort of isolated clip for us to put together, because we know that a lot of you guys use third-party, you know, content-type tools. Grow Workspace is a perfect complement to Get Oiling, because they produce content, so that you don't have to, right? That's educational and informative. We're just, you know, it's a great opportunity to plug in what you're getting from them into what you have with us, so that you can put it to good use. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about that some more here in just a bit. I want to get to a question from Dr. Lynn. Good to have you. Lynn asks, "Can you explain how to change the message that the people receive on a landing page that says 'Get My Newsletter'?" So Lynn, if you could clarify in the chat, please, is this on the landing page about whether or not they get the newsletter, like the text that's down below the opt-in frame? Or are you talking about something different, just so we can make sure we're answering this correctly for you? And while we're waiting, you guys, go ahead and, oh, here we go. Lynn says, "Once a person enters a landing page, it says 'Get My Newsletter.'"
Yeah, that text is.
Maybe a pop-up?
Uh, I think it's the little checkbox on the bottom. I can show you, that is customizable. Now, the built-in ones, I believe, all say "Get My Newsletter." And.
Ah, okay, Lynn is also saying, "What specifically do they receive, and how do we change this to be..." Okay, so, so how can you customize it, and then, and then what do they get just automatically? So I think they're, they're all going to get the New Prospects Campaign, if you haven't, if you haven't chosen anything else, if you haven't put any other campaigns, and the default is the New Prospects Campaign, which is a campaign that's preloaded and pre-written for you in Get Oiling. We've had people get, we've had some people report in and say that they have gotten new members off of that campaign, right? Yeah, so it's, it ain't bad.
Cool, yeah, so the landing page, edit that. Now, all the built-in landing pages that, you know, when you, when you go set up your site, so let me show you that first, like to, to put a landing page on your site, and I'm sure Lynn, you probably know how to do this. But under Customize My Site in the menu over here, there's this Landing Page dropdown. Now, it comes with, Get Oiling comes with all of these, not this Jamaican recipes, because that's this demo account, but all of these down here come built-in, and you can choose any of those. Now, if you choose a built-in one, it's going to say that, Get My Newsletter, whatever. So if you want to customize that, come under Landing Pages in the Contacts menu, and then you can actually choose one of the built-in themes as a starting point, and then you can customize it. So let's say you wanted this, discover this, this one here, so I'll go ahead and click Create. It uses that as a template, and then now it's fully editable. So I can come over here and click in there and change it to be Send My Free Recipes, or whatever you want to do there, so.
Or if this is a landing page for a class, it could be Send Me My Class, or, you know, yes, Register, you know, Register Me For Your Class, or something to that effect.
Yep, so you can customize really any of this, you know, change the title, fonts, whatever you want to do. We just edited the fonts not too long ago, and yeah, I mean, even the background image actually is editable. You can drag it around, which is not something that a lot of people know, but if you choose a background, you can do that, and.
I didn't know that. That's amazing, that's a good photo too.
Cool, yeah, it's, it's really neat. Now, it does kind of constrain it, so here's a pro tip, is if you hold down Shift while you're dragging, it does let you slide it around. Now, it works really good with this white background, but if you have one with the dark background, it doesn't work quite as well, so that's why it kind of locks it in. But yeah, anywhere that you hover over and there's this sort of yellowish background, you can change that, change the text, you can even change the label that appears in here. So, I mean, obviously it's still going to connect, collect your name, email, and phone, so you want to keep it something like that. But yeah, you can pretty much customize this as you choose.
Awesome, and Lynn, another question along these lines, how do you customize the campaign in the landing page?
Yeah, so, under Settings, Page Settings here, when you're editing the landing page, you get to choose which campaign to use. And you can build, use any of the built-in ones if you'd like. There's even one called No Campaign, because occasionally that comes up, like, I don't want any campaign, I don't want to send them anything, for whatever reason it might be, there's this No Campaign campaign. This is what you choose, but to custom, so once you, well, so if you're writing your own, you'd want to write that first, otherwise it's obviously not going to show up in the list until you create it. But once you do, you can select it here, and Creating the Landing Page, or sorry, the Creating the Campaign is back under here, I won't save my changes, but if you click under Contact Settings on the left, it will come over here and click on Campaigns, and this is where you would create this. And I believe we, we do have an existing training on this that goes in super in-depth, but the short version is you click Create Campaign, which then you give it a name, and you're preferred sending medium email, email text, and if you have two-way texting, you can set up the text in Keyword. And once you have that, I'll just go over to one over here that's already created. It'll take you to this screen where it'll allow you to write a new message, you can click on Write, and then it will add a My Message, and so this will send out to them right after they register, depending on which day you choose, and you can customize this with text and all that. I won't, I won't go to those details, because we covered that in a different training. But now we have a campaign that has one message in here, and Day Zero will send it out immediately after they register. So now that I've got this test campaign, I can go back over to the landing page and add that in there.
Awesome, and for those of you who are new to this concept or to this process, this is a funnel that we're making right now, and it doesn't have to be super complicated. If you go to youtube.com/getoiling, you'll see the recordings of these work sessions. There is one called The Funnel that breaks this down in complete detail, soup to nuts, and literally where you start, you know, with writing first, and then you're, you create your campaign, and then you do this, it's step-by-step. So definitely check that out, and Amy, to answer your question, yes, we are recording, yes, we do post these, and they are available to you just as soon as we're able to get them uploaded and sent out, usually within a couple of hours barring any technical issues. And they are at Get Oiling, I'm sorry, they're at youtube.com/getoiling, and we will email them to you as well. If you have signed up for these Weekly Work Session emails, then that's at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We send out an invite to join us 15 minutes before each call, and let you know about what's coming up, and give you opportunities to ask us questions and participate as well. Very cool, so Lynn, I hope that that helps, and actually toward that end, you actually have a question that talks about, we're going to talk about exactly that, that's actually where my brain was going. Lynn wants to know if it's possible to have both a campaign and also with a PDF information piece, or does it need to be in a campaign? The answer Lynn is, is ideally both, right? So that PDF asset that we have uploaded to the library, to, to your, your file manager inside of Get Oiling here, this is something that you could have on the other side of a landing page, but the campaign that you would want to have corresponding with this, which is one that you would want to write and make it really quick, is that you would have the email that says, you know, here's, you know, it's your confirmation, welcome, and in case you missed it, here's the link to that PDF file, right? So they get it as soon as they opt-in, but they also get an email so that they can go back and reference it. So my thinking was, because we don't have, you know, crazy volume of questions right now, by all means, guys, bring them in if you got them. I would actually like to walk through, maybe show of hands, would you like to see me walk through using a Sway from Grow Workspace to set up a funnel in Get Oiling? Hands, 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 so many hands, okay, cool. Okay. Alright, so I'm, I'm gonna share, and we're gonna get this done, awesome. Thanks, guys. Okay. Here we go, can we see Jane's site here?
Yes.
Alright, fantastic. So, the first step that you're going to take whenever you create a new funnel is first, the planning, right? And when you go back and you watch the funnel training, you'll see that, you plan and you write first, but just pretend that I've already done this and that I have more voluminous content to share. The first thing that we're going to want to do is we're going to go over to Settings, we're going to create a campaign. And actually, first, before we even do that, let me show you guys the Sway that we're using. This is Network Marketing 101, this is very specifically for business builders, okay?
Would it be possible, sorry to interrupt, would it be possible to shrink the height of your window? Because it makes it like super tiny.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Say when.
A little bit more. I think that's better. Yeah, you can actually make it wider. Is that possible? I know you've got a huge screen.
I do have a huge screen, thanks. Yeah, this is good?
Yeah.
Alright, this width and height, this is about the frame of a normal, normal computer. Alright, cool, sorry guys, I have a gigantic 5K monitor. Alright, so here's a Network Marketing 101 Sway, and I believe, Jackie, if you can confirm that this did come from Grow Workspace. You guys, if you're familiar, definitely go and check them out, they're very reasonable, Grow Workspace. Maybe Greg could pop a link to them, if you got it, or if one of you. Um, maybe Greg could pop a link to them, uh, if you got it, or if one of you guys who use them would like to pop a link. Uh, there's, uh, they have a lot of really cool resources. So this is a sway. It's a fairly new style of document delivery that Microsoft has created. It unfortunately does not currently export to PowerPoint. I don't know why. I wish it did. However, um, here's the great benefit for you. You can turn this into a PDF, which is pretty powerful. And by the way, this, this does this whole, you know, here's why network marketing is better, and then it actually talks about young living. So that's all here. And then you can start with a premium starter kit. And when you get this from them, um, it can actually be coded, like this one right here is actually coded to our friend Jackie here. So what we're going to do on this sway file is click this little button up here. We're going to hit export. We're going to export it to PDF. And then it's going to show up as a PDF file. If I could pull that up on my computer. Oh, it's not going to actually show you guys right away. But it's just page by page. And it's still, it's, it's got all the same good information. It doesn't animate in the same way that the sway does, but it's still the same information. You can still use the link to the sway as well, which, um, I, I'll grab that link, copy and paste that link as well, in case you wanted to do that instead. If you really prefer, uh, you know, scroll through and animations that it has, you could also just keep that there. All right.
And I think that is, the sway itself is, I think, maybe a little more mobile friendly than a PDF. So the link might be a, a good option for that.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so, so there's two options. You can keep it as a PDF, or you could just keep the link. Um, all right, so, uh, Val asks, are you in sway when you do that? Yes, I was, uh, this is a sway file. Um, so it's just, it's a link, um, that you would get from, uh, from someone like Grow Workspace who creates this and then replicates them for you. So just grab the link is all you gotta do. Okay, so, but back to first things first, we're going to create a quick campaign. And we'll call it, uh, the name of the sway, which is network marketing 101. Uh, this is Jane Jones's account. We're going to make this email and text so that they, so that people can get this information either way. All right, and then we're going to create a new message. Um, so we're going to say, hey, contact, first name. Oops, there we go. Here's your info. All right. And then what you could do in here, um, is you could write a bit more, or if you wanted to keep this text friendly, or if you wanted to have it text only, you could actually just drop the link right there. Right? If you wanted to write a little bit, if you wanted to write a little bit more, uh, and have it be, uh, super friendly to both, you could, you know, put some stuff here, maybe tell a little bit of your story. Uh, here's the link to view. Spelling, okay. And then you're going to insert the link. This is actually the easiest thing you can do, but if you had another kind of PDF, and this is to answer your question, Dr. Lynn, um, is you would upload a file, and this is where you can just drop a file from somewhere on your computer, uh, like Greg did earlier. And this, for you guys who missed it earlier, if you felt like it was a little fast, um, this is where you can add a PDF. So drop file, and then, oops. Okay, drop file, downloads, networkmarketing101.pdf, that's the one. Or, um, well, I mean, if you wanted to have it, yeah, so that here, here's your PDF. This, this is how we would do that. You wouldn't put sway in this way. Um, oops. Uh, and here's the PDF. Now, this is an interesting way to interact with this. Um, but this is now a link to a file that's in your file manager. So yes, we've added this here, but you actually don't have to keep it here like this, if you don't want it to just have the file name. So let's just say, for instance, I want to say, click here to download. All right, um, what you want to do, you can copy the link to this. Or you could hit edit link. There you go. Grab all of that right there. That is now the URL that's like on the GetOiling servers, ready to post to your account, um, wherever you want to put it. So now I'm going to delete this. And I'm going to create a link on this text, just to make it prettier, and I'm going to paste. Right? Another thing that you could do is you could insert your managed files. There it is, that 101. Right? So if you already have something that's uploaded, that's what you can do. But once you do it, it's there. Um, so you don't have to worry about deleting it from the, the message that you're composing. All right, so this campaign has a name, it has a first, uh, message. Uh, we're going to add it. That's all you need. It's really easy to have a campaign that just has one message that delivers a thing that, that people wanted. You obviously want to make sure that you are continually following up. If somebody opts in, for instance, learn more about network marketing, uh, through a funnel like this one, you could have another email that you send a few days later. You could do this manually at first. You could just reach out to them individually and say, hey, tell me what you think about this. I would definitely recommend that approach above all others, unless you've got a list of thousands and thousands of people who are opting into something like this. Not exactly scalable in that way. But if you've got a couple hundred contacts and one or two at a time are going through and looking at information like this, you want to treat this like they came to your house and saw a presentation. So you, you want to actually just reach out individually, so you don't have to have a super long campaign. A funnel can literally be a landing page that goes to a PDF on the other side and one email. That's a funnel, so don't worry about it being too, too complicated. All right, here's the next thing we're going to do, step two. So we're going to go make a landing page.
Quick question from Anna on that first. Can you back up one screen? She had asked about when you put that contact first name in brackets, will that automatically put their name in there? And yes, it does. So where it says, hey, contact first name, the contact first name with the brackets, we'll do that. There's a little dropdown when you're editing that lets you insert that, so you don't have to know that offhand. But, um, but yeah.
Oh, so sorry about that here, guys. Um, this little bubble right here. We'll give you first name, full name, company name, title, uh, your name, and also your member number, if you wanted to insert your member number, for whatever reason. But that's, that's in any, it's like all of our, all of our message capacity, right? Like-
Pretty much anywhere.
Awesome. Awesome. All right, so the next thing we're going to do is to go to landing pages under contacts, and we're going to create a new one. This is blank style one. Do we have any that are? Here we go. I, I'm going to edit one of the prettier ones. Um-
Style nine's pretty nice, too.
That's, that's a favorite. Yeah, I think I did a demo, uh, with this one specifically because it animates, right? All right. Your ticket to freedom awaits. Uh, and then I'm going to say, learn how to, oh, look, that the font matches your shoes almost. That's cute. Okay, um, learn how to love your work and experience true freedom. Spell that right. All right. Fill out the form below for my guide to the business of the future. All right, so, and like Greg mentioned, we can change the, the font size, we can change the font family, we can make it like this. Although that's, that's not my favorite.
Yeah, the headline does all uppercase for some reason.
This is a good one. You turn this red, it looks like a real internet marketing. That, uh, that, what, what, what's that one called? I forget. Anyway, so, uh, fill out the form for my guide to the business of the future. Uh, like Greg mentioned, you can change this. We could say your name, or first name, um, your best email, and so on. Um, you can also, let's see, so we can change this as well. Can it be deleted, this part?
Not through the landing page editor. You can do that with a custom page, but the checkbox is here.
I want your newsletter too. Okay, there we go. All right, so now that we have it looking like we want it to, we're going to go to settings, and we're going to go to page settings. And we're going to give it, uh, let's see, network marketing 101. Network marketing 101. And then we're going to go get that campaign that we just made, called network marketing 101. And we're going to call this network, just to keep it the same, marketing 101. All things the same, oops. All right, hit enter after you do that. All right, you can choose to show a message after registration. Um, to go back to what Lynn was asking, um, I'm actually going to have this form redirect to the next page. So, um, so that could be one of two things, right? So this URL that we grabbed, this is a PDF. Um, so if you had maybe an ebook in PDF format that you wanted to instantly deliver, then you would, um, then you would do this. Okay, um, and you could also require that they put their phone number here, if you want to make sure that you can text them as well. All right, and then we're going to hit done. We're going to hit save. And now we're going to test it out by hitting view. And I'm going to put in my name. Unlock this secret. And now we are on the PDF. Now, if you wanted to take that sway link, that, that direct sway link, this one right here, you could also do that, uh, if you weren't, if you didn't want to use a PDF. I, I would agree that using the, um, the sway link itself is definitely useful here, um, as a redirect. So again, that's under settings, page settings, URL, paste it, and then done, save, view. All right. And now it's on the sway.
And I did just confirm, it is mobile friendly if you use the sway. So that is a big plus over the PDF.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, you don't have to like zoom in and out, right?
Right, yeah, especially in a funnel when half the people are on a mobile phone anyway.
That's true. That is really true. All right. So this way, the person signing up would instantly receive the sway and the campaign starts. Yes, yes. Actually, if I were to go look right now, uh, I have got, yep. There it is. Hey, Ashley, here's your info. And reply to, yep, it's all there. Here's the link to view. What, yeah, it's all, I can't like pull up my email to show you, but, but yes, um, so now automatically, when someone registers on that page, they're going to instantly go to the sway or the PDF on the next page, um, that is either in your files manager or just the sway that you have. Uh, and then, uh, they will also get that email. The reason why you want to put it in the campaign, have it in email, is because people can opt into something, and then, you know, the, I don't know, the, the kid spills milk, or the dog barks, or someone's at the door, or, you know, or they're actually at work and aren't supposed to be home, wherever they are when they land on your webpage. They're not going to necessarily look at it and dive into it right away. So you want to have that opportunity to give them a copy, uh, so that they don't lose it, and so that you, of course, can continue to reach out to them. All right. Anybody got any questions? Ooh, anybody have any attraction marketing questions, since we talked about that last week? We've got an opportunity to go into greater depth here as well. Uh, and then, um, and then also, if any of you are considering joining us for the personal branding intensive, uh, we'll talk about that some more and answer any questions that you have about that as well. So go ahead and-
Yeah, Val had a, she said she has a question for the pre-built campaigns when you're done here. Uh, so Val, if you want to send that over, we'll see if we can answer that for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think the easiest way to test out what it looks like, um, what the built-in campaigns look like, is just go add yourself to that campaign. So let's, oh, actually, I should probably share that. So one quick share here, and then we can get on to the other questions that are coming in. So let's say this is, go to my contact manager, and this is my contact. Um, it's not me, but obviously it's you. So I'll go ahead and click on here, and, uh, scroll down, and there's an add campaign button. You're already on new prospects, but I'll just pretend, well, I'll just remove you from here. Well, it, it's same principle works. So just click add, pick any of the campaigns, and then click add campaign, and then you'll get it. And then you can see exactly what it looks like. Uh, it's probably the best thing. It takes six or, what, a couple of weeks to go over those, but, um, anyway, yeah, hopefully that helps, Val.
Oh, um, can I look at the free report I will send? So the, the new prospects campaign actually does have a, a free report, a PDF, in it, um, that delivers. It doesn't deliver immediately on the other side of the landing page, um, but it is in the campaign. Um, so if you, um, you could test that by sending it to yourself. Um, that's a quick and easy way to do it. Or you could just go in, uh, you could duplicate the campaign, uh, and edit it for yourself, or you could just go in and click, and you could find that PDF. Uh, it would, would it be in the file manager, um, or?
It's not. It's like in a separate location. Uh, but yeah, if you send, basically that first email gives you a link to it, and then you can get the download right away.
Awesome. Yep. Very cool. All right, so, hey, Doc, uh, we will have the branding intensive. Uh, it will be the first Thursday of May is when we kick that off, uh, which is the second, so it's in two weeks from today. Uh, and it will, will run live for four weeks, and that'll be at 9:00 PM Eastern, um, on those Thursdays. So the second, ninth, my calendar will cooperate, second, ninth, 16th, and 23rd of May. And everything will be recorded and available to you. Uh, it will remain available to you if you want to go back and revisit some of the concepts that we cover. Uh, if you find that maybe you aren't going to be immediately available, um, then, uh, you, you have that. It, it remains available to you. This intensive, so just to clue everybody in, that's a question that I was, I was just asked. The, um, so the, the personal branding intensive, this is a program that is really designed to help you discover your voice, that would allow you to attract the people that you want into your business online. So, so that you are, you are a beacon to those that you want to attract to you. Uh, and it's a really fun process. This is something that I've taught for many years in this industry. And, um, and actually, uh, in a modulated form, it's something that is so, I guess we'd say evergreen in terms of concept, that one of the sessions that I ran in 2014 is still applicable, and we still use with our clients today. Right? So, uh, you're going to get a lot of value in this being live, because we can work together, um, because you'll have accountability partnership in really kind of developing your message and having that sounding board of a community to work with. And of course, we will be working together to integrate these aspects of your personal brand into action in your GetOiling system. So, you know, getting your page set up so that visually it's how you really want it to be, so it really exudes who you are and the message that you want to send. Uh, getting things in line so that you know what to write and when, right? So if you're going to blog, if you're going to make videos, uh, or if you're going to, you know, use any other means of copy or communication, getting clear on how you're going to communicate, what you're going to communicate, and strategically setting yourself up to where you're not guessing anymore, right? You're not spinning your wheels. You have a plan in place. And, uh, and of course, we then get to work, getting that done, and, and inside of a really great supportive community. And yeah, if you guys have any questions, definitely send those along. For those of you who are interested in participating in the personal branding intensive, this is something that would otherwise be offered in excess of $900. However, it is available to you as an annual, a new annual member of GetOiling. So if you are not a member with us yet, definitely go over to getoiling.com forward slash icon, right? Yeah, getoiling.com forward slash icon. This is become an icon, personal branding intensive. Uh, so you can get to the details there. And, um, yeah, yeah, that's, everything is right there. Do we have any other questions, you guys, while we're still here, and can answer them? Oh, yeah, um, so in terms of how to get started, if you are already an annual member, get in touch with us, and we'll look at, um, you know, at how you can get your next year started. Um, so basically, the, the idea here is that you're just prepared, you've got the tools that you need, uh, and then you get access, right? So it, it's just a matter of upgrading from monthly to annual, or from starting from brand new to annual at basic, premium, and above. And, uh, yeah, so if you're already a member, just send us an email to info@getoiling.com, and we will get you set up. And we're super excited to have you. Our classes are filling up fast. Thank you, Lynn. I- Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate your participation here. You are a valued member of our community. All right. Good class today, guys. Any questions, any requests for future trainings? How many loved the idea of putting a Sway into a funnel so you don't have to worry about creating a lead magnet? Show of hands. All the hands.
That's an awesome idea.
Now, I will say, guys, this is, this is coming from someone who's been a professional internet marketer for a long time now. At the end of the day, people want to hear your voice, right? So you do want to get yourself to the point where you do feel comfortable creating that stuff. And that is something we're going to do in the Personal Branding Intensive. But in the meantime, less than perfect is perfect, right? Action is more important than waiting to have everything exactly so. Because if you do that, I mean, it's never gonna get you anywhere, right? And, oh, thank you, Jackie. I didn't know that. You can edit the Sways. I didn't know this. So you can go, so here's, here's your recommendation, to make it your own. Go into your Sway and edit them. Now, that, that's above my pay grade. I don't know how to do that. However, I'm sure there's a way to do it. Insert your story, right? Insert your perspective. Tell a little bit about yourself, why it's important to you. Make it personal, right? Because again, at the end of the day, you can turn anything into something special, even if the thing that you're sharing is not your own. I have, I've actually told several people this on calls that I've had recently with our private clients as well as others in the community. I became a top recruiter for my first network marketing company with an hour and 45-minute-long crappy recorded webinar from someone in my upline. All I did was invite people to watch that webinar, and I closed them onto the deal. And I became a top recruiter in my company. It wasn't my webinar. Right? Ideally, you want to have your own stuff eventually, right? You need to have that be a goal, but it doesn't mean that you can't absolutely rock with whatever you've got in your hands. So definitely, you know, make that little tweak. Don't worry about perfection. Really, the point, you guys, is getting better at the share, at, you know, communicating and following up and having this stuff be the framework and the infrastructure that supports you as you go out and take those specific actions. Awesome. Lynn reports that the Sways are very easy to edit. I'm happy to hear that. Good, good. Jackie says, when you get the link from the Sway, from say, Grow Workspace, then you duplicate it and can edit it to suit you in your own Sway account. So you need to get a Microsoft Sway account, duplicate the Sway that you get from elsewhere, and then edit it. Perfect. Thank you so much for the help there, guys.
And Suzanne says she's interested in the Personal Branding Intensive. So Suzanne, I just sent you an email with some of the details on that, so check your email and let me know.
Fantastic. Yes, this is a great opportunity to rebrand. I think that that's, it's an important exercise for us to embark on. And this is a perfect time of year to do it as well, to be fair. You know, we think about spring cleaning. We think about sort of freshening our homes, renewing as, you know, as we're shaking the winter off of us. You know, it's the idea of being reborn, right? That's literally a theme of like this week, you guys. So this is a perfect opportunity to rebirth your brand and uncover what makes you shine and, and, and what's going to ultimately attract the people and the opportunities to you that, that you deserve and that others deserve to hear from you so that you can grow your business and make the impact that you are meant to make on the world. All right, well, if we don't have any additional questions, then we will be on our way. I'll give you guys just a couple of seconds to pop those over. You're welcome to ask anything. We're still here for you. We've got about six minutes left till we get to the top of the hour, and we're here to help. Oh, thank you, Lynn. We're excited to have you with us, and we appreciate all the help that you give us as well.
Lynn, I will send you the info for the branding here after the call is done.
And in the meantime, you guys, again, for the recording, it's getoiling.com forward slash icon, I-C-O-N. Is there a recording on blogging? Yes, Lynn, if you go to the Help section in your GetOiling back office and you scroll down to the 90 Day Challenge, there is a 90 Day Challenge table of contents. There is a video specifically on blogging and using the GetOiling platform to blog. And blogging is something that we're gonna talk about in the Personal Branding Intensive as well. We're not gonna go into as great a depth as we did in that video. It's gonna be more of like a high level, you know, this is how you present yourself. These are the things you'll talk about and so on. This hour went really fast, so excited about the campaign. Going to create it right away. Awesome! Go do the thing that we taught you today. Yes! Let's see, Joy, yes, this is recorded. And, and we record this every week. We are here at noon Eastern every single week. And the recordings are posted within a couple of hours at youtube.com/getoiling. And if you have signed up at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, which is probably what landed you here today, if this wasn't, if this link wasn't shared with you by someone else, then we'll be emailing that recording to you as well. Hi, Amelia. Happy catching up, and we can't wait to see the good work that you do. Thank you for joining us today. All right, do people put Sways in the blogs, Dr. Lynn asks? I don't know. It doesn't seem like an ideal format to place there. But what you could do, if you were doing a blog about a particular topic, you can say, I've got a great resource, and you could learn more by clicking here. And then it goes to that landing page that we just created that has the Sway on the other side of it. That's how I would recommend using Sways with blogs. That way, you get people onto your email list, too. That's the whole point. Whole point of blogging, if you're not blogging for ad revenue, which a lot of bloggers do, that they have advertising on their pages that they earn money from, or if they're on affiliate marketing, which is okay, but it doesn't provide residual income. The point of blogging is to get people onto an email list so that you can offer them things from your email. Awesome. All right, great. Thank you, guys, and we will see you next week at the same time, noon Eastern, for the next weekly work session.
Thanks, everyone. See ya.